It was good.
Oh, you mean we weren't recording when that happened? Thank you, Charlie. That was excellent. Well done. And I think you set a record as the youngest person to ever do that, at least in the last nine years that I've been watching. So we well done, sir. The next item on the agenda is a special recognition, resolution twenty four dash zero one two. It's a joint resolution expressing appreciation to West Jordan's representatives at the state legislature, and we're going to have Ms. Tony Barker lead us off on this one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Council. It's a pleasure to join you tonight. And we had some great conversations about some of the work that was going on up at the legislature this year, and we had many, many opportunities to talk about the good work of our legislature, and it is my pleasure to join you today in thanking our legislators for their good work on behalf of the community this year during the 2024 legislative session. And I know before you, you have a joint resolution and and Council Chair, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, but I just personally, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn around because they're behind me. And personally thank them for their efforts on behalf of our city. And I know you have a resolution that you'd like to take a look at, and then I think when you complete your business, if if it is appropriate, Council Chair, we'd love to have them join you up here for a photo.
That would be great. All right. So the resolution on the table is resolution twenty four dash zero one two. Recognizing and expressing appreciation to West Jordan's representatives at the state legislature. I bring it to the council for a motion. For Lamb.
Move to approve position twenty four dash zero one two.
Second.
Okay, that's motioned to approve by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. A discussion to the motion? All right, seeing none, let's have a, oh, we do have some. Councilmember Whitelock.
I just want to add my thanks for the hours that you spend on our behalf at the Capitol and also all of the hours you're spending outside of the Capitol. Thank you for the work that you do.
Excellent. Any further comments? Awesome. Ms. Quika, vote, please.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Thank you. I show the motion passes seven to zero.
Wonderful. And as Tony said, let's invite the our representatives that are here to and representatives and senators, I guess there's two ways to say that. Come on up and we'll get a picture with the council and and all y'all. Through the miracle of technology, we have copies of that resolution for all of you already signed. No, we don't make decisions beforehand. All right. Thank you once again for your work and and all that all that they were able to accomplish on behalf of not just West Jordan, but cities across the state. Having been on Legislative Policy Committee for the league this time around. I know there was a lot of battles to keep cities working well, and they fought a lot of good battles for us. All right, next up on the agenda is our public comment period. This is the chance for anybody in the room or online to address the council on pretty much anything that has to do with the city. We give you three minutes. If you're online, we ask you to hit the raise hand button on the Zoom or on a telephone, that's a star nine if you're dialed in. You get three minutes. We typically don't do a back and forth. If you have questions, that's great. We'll have somebody get back to you. But this is our opportunity to just basically listen to what you have to say. So we'll go ahead and open that up. Anybody in the room who would like to address the council during the public comment period? Now would be a time. Oh, my gosh, it's Steve. I almost didn't recognize you.
Now would be the time. Members of the council, I greatly appreciate you taking the time to listen to me today. I'm here because I read in the notes that there's a resolution twenty four oh one four calling for in excess of three months is a benefits. And I'm kind of here to voice my opinion that I don't like that. Six months is way too long. We are a network state. I know people on the bottom end of the tier here, we don't get that. We don't get executive vacations and all the other perks that seem to go with it. This is, this is one where I just really have a tough time understanding why. And I'm not meaning this to be demeaning. It's nothing personal. I don't. It's just generally across the board. I think a three month, seven package is way and way and above beyond what the average person gets when they, for whatever reason, lose their jobs. I've heard in years past the excuse of, well, they're they're executive and it takes them a little longer or whatever, but I just, I just kind of don't buy that. In this day and age where we're worrying about money. This is one of those things that when we went to a strong form, a strong mayor form of government, that I think one of the selling points was this was going to be kind of a just a swap over and give the mayor a little bit more say what's happening up on Capitol Hill. And what I've seen is pretty much since I stopped coming before COVID is the balloon of the upper echelon. And we're paying an awful lot of dollars and I, and as a citizen of West Jordan for over forty years, I don't know that I have seen anything that has changed my life from the city that would justify what we've, what we're seeing. Now maybe somebody can educate me and I'm, I'm always willing to listen and be educated, but I just, I think this is where I kind of put my foot down and say, no. Three months is plenty of time. It's more than what the average person gets for their severance. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. That was Steve Jones, by the way. We didn't have you give us your name at the beginning, but that's okay. We got it for the minutes. Anybody else, anybody else in the room who would like to address the council? This would be a good time to do it. There are three public hearings, by the way. I forgot to mention that at the beginning. If you are here to speak on one of those items, the time is not quite yet, but it will be shortly. Anybody else in the room? Okay, seeing none, anybody online, Mr. Anderson?
Council Chair, there is, there is no one online that has their hand raised.
Perfect. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and come to reports. We'll start with the city council reports. Anybody would like from the council who would like to update us in the public on what's been going on? Councilmember Green.
I didn't see any other lights go on, so I'll I'll jump in. And I'll let the other two council members jump in if they want to, but I will say that council members. I'm looking at Canton. I can't think of his last name. Councilmember Shelton Bedore and I all went out to a public meeting that the mayor had and Tony helped run Ms. Ms. Barker. She did a great job of running that meeting, by the way, Mayor. I know you had to step out a little bit early, but she did a great job. Her and Marie did a great job of running that meeting. It was a good chance to talk with that neighborhood again. I think some of them were disappointed at the city's direction. But I think most of them understand, most, most understand the, the, the road we're going down. I had to throw that in, Mayor, because, you know. But you know, it, but it was good to be out there with the neighborhood. And as we enter the environmental impact phase, I know I made a promise to them that we will be extremely sensitive to the neighborhood and try to come up with as you know, as many good solutions as we can to help make that neighborhood safer and quieter. So, but it, but it was a good opportunity to meet with them.
Councilmember Bedore.
I'd like to just echo what Councilmember Green was saying and with Councilmember Shelton and I. I think one of the things we took away from that, especially with Councilmember Shelton and I being new was how much the people just wanted to be heard and have a chance to be heard. And I think that it was very good to see a good contingent of the council, the mayor out there as well, at least listening to the people and trying to take in what we can. Sometimes the frustrations of the, of the city, they understand things are happening, but they, they want at least a voice and it was good to do that and, and made me understand that that's something that I need to be doing a lot more of in this new position. So I was grateful for that time and grateful to have the two of you there as well.
Councilmember Shelton.
So the, the meeting at Antelope Canyon, I feel like it went really well. That's the meeting that they were already talking about. After that meeting, I went out and walked the neighborhood with a few of the neighbors there and they had some great ideas that I'm excited to share with the council at some point on, on how we can mitigate some of the impacts on, on that extension of Ninetieth South through their neighborhood. Just last night, I attended a meeting with the, some members of the Jordan School District Board of Education, Nikki George, Lisa Dean and Marilyn Richard Richards were the board members in attendance, and then council members Bedore and Lamb and myself attended. It was good just to have a just to have a face to face meeting with them and, and everyone expressed a willingness to work together and serve our community. And we just opened a dialogue for the future. It was great. Also, yesterday I did a ride along with David Mago of, from the Code Enforcement Office, and I also spent some time talking with Brock Hudson, who's a Code Enforcement Office Director. And we shared a mutual agreement in the broken window theory where we need to keep our city looking good in order to prevent crime, the expansion of crime in our city and to make it a place that's desirable for our residents to live long term. It was a good meeting and we discussed some of the ideas of the visual survey to to look at as a, as a council and, and make decisions on definitions to make it easier for them to do their job when they go out to do. So they are working on that this week and they showed me their progress and I was happy to see that. We also had the lunch at the Grand America Imperial Ballroom with Utah Foundations, and I'm sure Mayor Byrne will talk about that, so.
Excellent. Anybody else from the council? All right, let's go ahead and go to the council office report. Um, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, as I've reported previously, the, the Easter egg hunt is this Saturday at nine o'clock. It'll end at probably nine o'clock and thirty seconds. The youth council will be assisting as part of their service to the city. Speaking of youth council, we are beginning to start recruiting for next year's youth council members for next school year. So that's being worked on and we will have that be done and completed before the school year ends. Just a reminder that state law requires the budget, the mayor's tentative budget to be presented to you, the first meeting in May, which right now is scheduled for May eighth. So just know that that's just a few weeks away. And then just in the council chambers, you'll notice that the lecturn now matches the rest of the woodwork that was done over the weekend. We appreciate working on the punch list. Signage is being worked on and we will have some signs and maps so the residents know which district they live in when they come and visit a city council meeting. There'll be a logo behind you eventually on that nice blue wall. And we'll have pictures of you out showing what district you represent or at large. It'll be outside the council chamber. So during the business day when this room's not in use, residents will be able to look at where they live, who's their district representative and be able to contact you. And that's our report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the mayor's report. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up the Ninetieth South meetings. Thank you for attending that Ninetieth South meeting. And that was a good example of, I don't know what the Packers has to do with the Ninetieth South meeting, but we tried to pack the people in. But that was a good example of the residents wanting more information and we hired some consultants, got them more information, got back to them and let them know that what they want is important and they were heard and we took their things into account. So thank you for being part of that and helping with that to go smoothly. Yesterday I had the opportunity to attend the Utah Chiefs of Police Association and two of our officers received awards there. We had Officer Trajillo, as you see in the center there, he received a Purple Heart. You might recall he was the officer that was shot in the line of duty while here while he was working. And after he got shot, he continued to work with the perpetrator and keep him under control so the other officers could get him, get to him without putting them in danger. So he received the Purple Heart for that. And then in the picture on the left there in the center, that's Detective Sullivan. He received an award because for the, his award he got is the Police Officer of the Year Award for the state of Utah. So that just kind of shows you what great officers we have in our city. We are the only city that had two officers receive awards. And so that was pretty impressive as well. So if you would like, I would like to bring them in in two weeks and have an opportunity to recognize them here. They're not back from St. George yet, or they might be just barely getting back. Okay, next one on there is you may have noticed some scaffolding over at the Thomas Reese Building, and that is in getting a stucco repaired done on it. And then if you notice the picture on the offset, that is the block that's around, goes all the way around the building. It's in disrepair. We are going to be repairing that as well, but they're starting the stucco now. As the weather permits, they can't do stucco if the weather is not good. So if we have four hours of dryness, they'll get work done over there. And they're also going to be sealing the brick. It's already been delivered. It's been signed. We'll just seal it. Economic Development had a tour over its sprung structures today. You may know them as the past used to be called sprung, sprung instant structures. This location here in West Jordan is their national headquarters. They are an international business. And they are getting ready to do an expansion, which will be quite a big increase for them and keep their headquarters here. And we're fortunate to have such a well-known, well-established quality company within our city. I thought I'd put this on here because this comes up every now and again. Last year, maybe a little bit before that, maybe two years ago, we started putting these signs up that says temporary dead end. We did that because when those properties sell and then development goes in there and then our own goes through, the residents are like, well, we didn't know the street was going to go through there. So we're doing this not because anything is going to happen in the near future, but someday something will. And we want everybody that lives in that area to know that that is a planned access for a future development. And don't be surprised when a new development comes in and the access actually goes through that road. And it no longer will be a dead end.
Is that my photo?
Pardon me?
Is that my photo?
That's your photo. Thank you.
This was in my neighborhood. It just, it came up and I asked him about it. So thank you.
And you weren't the only one. We had some others inquire too. So, and that happens across the city. When they pop up, we get inquiries. So that way if they ask you, you can tell them. Okay. I'm not sure how to pronounce this, so I'm going to default to our attorney because he can speak these words. But Josh and I went and had an opportunity to visit with the governor from Ukraine and a couple others of their delegation who were there. They spoke with us. Can you pronounce that name for me, please?
Sure, that's Ruslan Kravchenko from the Kyiv Oblust.
Thank you. See why I didn't want to try.
Easy for you to say.
And, and that's him speaking there and that's his translator off to the right. And they are, there is some Utah organizations that are providing service to them in their country, and they wanted to come out and say thank you and have an opportunity to share with us some of the things that they're doing. They're taking cities that have been bombed out by some of the tanks would just drive down the streets and randomly just bomb out houses. They just had families in there. And there are nonprofit organizations that are going out there here from, from the Salt Lake area who are helping rebuild those houses for them. And that was pretty impressive. Okay, upcoming events, the first Friday, April fifth. Oh, that already happened. No, it didn't. April's not here yet. Okay, April fifth. So please come and plan for that. If you haven't been to one of these, you're going to find the, your high quality. They're all Utah musicians from different parts and their talents are very superb. So and our annual Easter hunt, which Alan already mentioned to you, and that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Oh. You might want to include us one more.
I don't want to forget this one. Thank you. So April fifth, we are going to have the groundbreaking for our, our second part of the groundbreaking at a different location for our community art center. And that'll be at three PM. We hope that you can come and help us turn a shovel full of dirt. And I'm inviting people that still have the shovel from before to bring that with them. Otherwise we'll have some other shovels here for when they get there. So any of you have the shovel from back there? Do you have yours?
I think I'm the only one, yeah. Singing on the wall in my garage.
Please bring that with you. Thank you for that. All right. Now I think that's into my report.
And the irony is, is I wasn't even at the first one because I was in here for a, another meeting that had, was being held that day. So I couldn't be out there, but somebody who was there saved me a shovel.
I hope you could be to this one.
I hope so too. All right. What day of the week is that? That's, that's a Friday. Okay. It's the same day as the first Friday. Yeah, okay. Yes, I should be able to make it. All right, moving on to city administrator report, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask that my time be given to Corey Frelick to give you an update on some things happening in the Public Services Department.
Thank you, Council. Um, just a few quick updates of what's going on in Public Services. One information item. Our parks, field reservations and pavilion reservations begin April first. So this weekend, those begin. However, restrooms will still remain closed due to weather. We're hoping for mid-April. It's kind of a target date, but we'll keep you posted just in case you get those questions. The restrooms will be mid-April. A few projects that we've got going on, want to update you on. First one is Will's Park. It is currently moving as quick as they can due to weather. They, every day that they have a break in the weather, they're out moving dirt around. Last week utilities and water was connected, so that was a big milestone to, to meet that. And they are still on track and on schedule for an opening in late June of this year, at least for the first phase. Second project, the Ronwood Master Plan, RFP, that process is closed. We've selected a contractor. We're currently in the, the phase of awarding that and, and the procurement team is working on a contract. Hopefully we'll secure that within the next week and then we'll begin immediately on the process of, of the Ronwood Master Plan. We currently have two other RFPs that are out. One is for the redesign or design of the entryway seventieth south. As you come in from the east side, we've got an RFP out until April third to redesign that area. And we also have an RFP that has been extended to April third for the zero escaping project here at City Hall. And what that is, all of the islands in the parking lot will, the turf will be removed. We'll put in rock and some, some low maintenance plantings. And then we're going to extend the rock as far as we can. All that project is being completed with a grant that we received. So it's due to water efficiency and water conservation. The other grant we received for a water conservation project is at Pioneer Hall. Just a quick update, we've removed trees there. We're removing grass and putting cobble rock. Our in-house parks crew is doing that project. The next step is we're working on curbing and gutters for the parking lot there, and then we'll be redoing the parking lot this July. The last project we wanted to give a quick update on, Warren's got some pictures here. Later tonight, you'll hear a presentation from the baseball league regarding the service and Lewis fees. Our team finished last month this project at Ronwood, and this is what has the last two years service of Lewis fees has done. They've installed batting cages. And now there's a connector sidewalk. We noticed once the batting cages started going in from the parking lot there, there, people were just cutting across the grass, making a natural trail. Not really a safe walk. So this sidewalk was installed, batting cages are complete. In this picture, you'll see those batting cages. They're beautiful. Nets will go up in the next couple of weeks. So that's, you'll hear about that. But this is where the funding has gone for the last two years for that project. And it's, I know our parks crew really enjoyed that one. It's fun to work with, with the community, with baseball groups, and this was one they were really proud of. So is there any questions I can answer?
Any question? I have a question real quick. On the batting cages, there's not pitching machines in there. Is it?
Nope, nope. It's just for throwing, just warming up. Teams show up early practices.
Batting cage slash bullpen kind of a thing.
Yep, just for pitching. Yep, no machines whatsoever.
Gotcha. Perfect. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Green was next, but you can go after him.
I like all the questions.
Now, now it's Councilmember Whitelock.
I was just gonna ask, do the nets belong to the city or does that belong to the baseball teams?
It's a great question, actually. Dave?
It's city.
City. Yeah, that one I'm not sure. So thank you. All right. And since we now got all out of order, we'll go Councilmember Whitelock.
Corey, while I appreciate that you're going to water efficiency, the mention of rock over and over and over has me very concerned.
Okay.
Because as we transition from grass and trees to rocks, we're just creating heat islands. We're just creating a different problem. So I hope that we're adding plenty of live plants in your rocks because I'm concerned.
Yeah, yep. And those islands, we put strategically put a few plants. You try to keep it as minimal as possible for maintenance purposes, but I understand what you're saying. We also the, sometimes the negative of rock is it's just a lot of rock. And so we try to balance that with, with other decorative landscape, whether it's large boulders, trees, plantings. Because that, yeah, we try to do our best so it's not just rock.
We have a great garden just down the street if you want to get some ideas. Councilmember Green.
Just one more comment. Thanks to you and to Tyler. For those, just for the rest of the council, I got an email today. The Veterans, the Gold Star Memorial that we are putting out out by, in Veterans Park out west of us is coming along and now the committee is getting together to meet to decide what goes on the back sides of the granite because it's community-based pitchers. So we're well along on that project and appreciate what you guys are doing for that.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I failed to leave that, put that on here. But one of the reasons we sent that email because Tyler's had a hard time getting the committee together to choose the pictures. So luckily with Marie's help on Tony's team, she was able to send out a survey so people could just select which pictures and hopefully we'll reach a conclusion a lot quicker. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lee, anybody else from staff for this one?
That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Uh, next up on the agenda is, uh, item 6A. This is the public here. We're starting into the public hearings now. Uh, this is ordinances related to the Jones Landing North Development. This is 53.4 acres at 6835 West. New Bingham Highway. Yeah, that's still New Bingham Highway. That's right. It's on the other side of Mountain View. This I believe will be somebody from Planning Taylor. Come on down. Usually there's a slide that tells me who it is. I'm sure there is.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. I didn't know if you wanted the applicant to come up first or me, so.
You can go first.
All right. Uh, so this is three applications. It's for a future land use map amendment, a master development plan in agreement and a rezone. So we can see the location there, which I should show you. So it's on the south side of New Bingham Highway, next to the water tanks. Uh, it's next to the Echo Ridge subdivision just to the west there. Uh, this is kind of where we're in the process tonight. It's the council, the public hearing. And adoption, if it is approved, they will still need to come through the full planning process for the preliminary site plan and major subdivisions. So just want to let you know we're kind of been through a little bit, but we still have a couple of steps to go if this is approved tonight. So this isn't the only public hearing that would be held for this project. I mentioned the first application is for a future land use amendment. Uh, this property is one large parcel and it's got multiple designations on it. The pink that we see is Southwest Quadrant. Uh, the purple is, uh, light industrial and the green is park. So as we can see, it's changing, um, a large portion of that park and all of the light industrial to that Southwest Quadrant. Um, that's not the exact line where the park is, but it's, um, close. Uh, in addition to that, we're looking to rezone this from agricultural A20, which is 20 acre lots. And M1, which is light industrial, uh, to rezone the entire 53.4 acres to the Southwest Quadrant Mixed Use Zone. Uh, here on the left, we can see, uh, the division that the applicant's proposing. So there's a little over 19 acres of residential that would be in the first phase. And then, uh, 34 acres there to the west, which is office and warehouse and, uh, some flex space is conceptually planned. On the right, we can see, uh, the concept plan for that residential included in that is that long linear park. Which, uh, would be going into the first couple of phases with that residential development. Um, the park is, uh, going to be a public park built by the applicant and then, uh, turned over to the city. And it's really, the purpose of that is to serve a buffer to the Echo Ridge subdivision. And that's a a large portion of why we're seeing the residential here is because Echo Ridge is kind of in an island of industrial all around it. So this will allow it to kind of not be all by itself and have a nicer transition to some of those more intensive uses, which we'll see to the north, southwest and east of it. On the left, we, uh, can see the, uh, the road circulation map. One thing that you'll, uh, notice is that kind of lighter color blue arrow, uh, which is a connection to the Echo Ridge subdivision. That is planned to be a private right of way. We don't normally have a public right of way that turns into a private as it goes through a subdivision or development. But in looking at this project, that seemed like the best way to get the maximum amount of parking, but also traffic calming. And so staff, including engineering, is recommending that we make an exception about that at this time.
Uh, question from Councilmember Green.
On this particular, I mean, that's going to connect the parking lot to the, um, Echo Ridge neighborhood. Do we see the tra- and and thi- this has got an arrow going out of Echo Ridge. But the traffic can also enter Echo Ridge from that neighborhood.
Yes.
What's the impact of connecting that private access lane to Echo Ridge? Going to do to the neighbors and the increased traffic? Are there going to be any increased traffic?
Yeah, that that's a very good question. So this slide right here, uh, we had a traffic study done. But then we also had the city employee traffic engineer look at this. And the Echo Ridge subdivision in this neighborhood, it only has two outlets. And so that's either to Mountain View corridor or 90th South going to the east or to U111. And so we can see those kind of the bullseyes are those outlets. Um, the main way to get there is on that New Bingham Highway piece. So you can either directly exit out there and go along New Bingham Highway to either of those locations or wind through the neighborhood. What the traffic study and our traffic engineer, uh, concluded is, uh, traffic's not going to go from the apartment complex through the neighborhood. More likely the neighborhood's going to portion of that exit out through this newly created access. So we actually think some parts of that neighborhood is going to have less traffic. And maybe some of these houses which are at the very end are going to see more drive by traffic because they were a dead end previously. But we don't anticipate a a real negative impact on those locations.
Okay. Do do we have a potential solution if we start to get a bunch of complaints?
Um, I know that we have our traffic engineer and the mayor meets with neighborhoods when they do have traffic problems. And we do try to implement traffic calming measures. That's usually narrowing the road and, um, implementing speed limits and those types of things. So, um, those are options, I guess. Policy decisions you guys could also implement different items if you so wish.
Okay, um, I have I have just a question before we go to Councilmember Lamb, um, real quick. Is to keep that a private road, will it be gated for residents or the apartments only?
No, it's going to have a public access easement over it, so it'll be publicly available to be used. The only reason we're going to a private road is because, uh, to get a better parking ratio there, they need to have parking stalls along there. And to get more, they want to do parallel parking stalls, which we don't allow on a public road. So that's the only reason that we're exploring a private road in that location.
Oh, interesting. Okay, the concept plan shows perpendicular and angled parking, not parallel. So I was just curious.
Yeah.
About that. Um, Councilmember Lamb?
Uh, just a few thoughts as I look at this. I I've dealt with an issue like this probably five times before when I was on the council. The the people that are not going to be happy are the five surrounding homes of this 9540 South. Um, one solution we could look at is similar to what we see over by Arby's and Cal Ranch. Where there is an outlet for emergency vehicles, but it's a closed road and has, I'm not sure what they are, just kind of the emergency. The only time they can be used is for emergency vehicles. And the only reason I say that is because I I can already tell you right now. At least the one home on 9540 South is not going to be happy this is opening up to apartments. If it was opening up to other homes and more of a subdivision, you probably wouldn't hear the complaints. But with this opening up to apartment complexes, I I believe at least five or six of those homes that are going to say, I don't want that traffic coming from the apartment complexes, nor would they want to use the apartments there. And that's just coming from me and 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 the thoughts there.
Yeah. So if I can address that, I I know very well what you're speaking of. We've actually had some traffic problems in that location and a recent application that was approved through Planning Commission. Is going to be removing those bollards and that access, uh, next to Arby's will be opening up. Because of having those bollards there has created traffic problems for that neighborhood that were intended to solve. So that is something we've thought about, but we we've seen where that's actually had negative connotations elsewhere. And so that's one reason why we didn't want to go that way here.
Yeah. And we will have a public hearing momentarily too.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but that first part of the parking lot just west of the entrance in, um. That that the, yeah, the blue, the light blue area there, that's actually, isn't that area actually going to be dedicated as public parking? And for the park?
Correct. You can see those two light, uh, blue boxes there that will all be public parking for the parks. That won't be able to be used as the apartments. They have to park in those dark blue parking, uh, locations.
And when people from the apartments do park there, dot, 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 question mark?
They'll be enforced probably by the HOA that's going to be located there.
Interesting. All right. Carry on, carry on.
All right. I love these questions though. Um, I did also want to just touch on the right side of the screen. We can see the connectivity of pedestrian trails. Uh, so you can see there's a number of pedestrian trails there, including the purple one. It's just a a regional trail which will be connecting through this project. So, um, it will be increasing the walkability in this area, especially, uh, with that park. Everyone should have good access to that park, both from Echo Ridge and this new subdivision. Uh, one thing with the zone that they're going to the Southwest Quadrant Mixed Use Zone, part of the MDP and MDA is they need to, uh, come up with some design standards. And so here in the screen, we can see some of the examples of the commercial and the residential design standards the applicant came up with. These are over and above what our standard design standards are in our zones. These have been reviewed by our development review committee and our planning commission, and they've both found them to be acceptable and are recommending approval tonight. Uh, and then going back to this one, on the right side, we can just see kind of the phasing of the project. So the dark gray will be the last phase and the residential will start from the north and move to the south. And again, this is just another phasing map. Um, so we can see that red will be the first phase. So we have the park all over the roadway and the top half of the residential. Then they'll come in with the second half of residential in the green. And then, uh, those commercial industrial type uses will follow in, uh, phase two. And this is just a a concept or a contact, a context map, just kind of showing where this is in location to, uh, the surrounding area. And as mentioned, the planning commission did recommend approval of all three of these applications. Uh, one thing we did want to bring up as staff as well is, uh, we didn't catch it at the time, but in the master development plan. Uh, there is some reference to exceptions that could be made by the DRC. Um, that was just because I think this code was kind of worked on and borrowed from other locations as well. That should read zoning administrator. And we've talked with the applicant about that and that was their intent. We just missed that. So we would like to ask that that does get changed and, um, that can happen through the motion tonight if you so choose.
So in in particular, it's on pages five and six of the, uh, master development plan. Um, as Taylor mentioned, those two references to DRC, we're recommending that that be replaced. The acronym DRC in two places be replaced by the words zoning administrator. Parenthesis, if it is a minor variation and parenthesis. And I think that's more consistent with our city code.
Right.
And then the other, uh, change staff is recommending is to the master development agreement. Uh, the, well, not the agreement itself, it's, uh, got all the proper terminology. But the two ordinances approving the MDA and the map amendments, there's a typographical error that doesn't reflect. It should be the same.
Yeah.
Word that's in the agreement, which is the applicant is Gardner West, Jordan LC. So we're recommending that the entity there be replaced with the correct entity and the second whereas clause of both ordinances.
Perfect. And I believe staff has all those ready to go. Uh, we have some questions for staff, so let's go to Councilmember Shelton first.
So, uh, my first question is just, um, when is phase two expected to be to begin versus their phase one and 1B?
Um, but I'd be a question I'd throw to the applicant. I don't know their timing.
All right, Councilmember Green.
Um, I've got a couple of questions. Bottom of page eight of the MDP. Um. It reads. Buildings setbacks are 22 feet from front and rear property lines. Side yard setbacks, minimum five feet with a combined of 13. What the heck does that mean? Is there some words missing?
No, so I think it's what that's saying is the minimum five, uh, side yard setback is five feet, but the two sides together have to be 13 feet. So if you have five feet on one side, the other side needs to be at least eight feet. So your total is 13 feet of total setback. And and the purpose is so some of those buildings can be closer, but we still want to make sure that there's decent.
I just thought we're it it not very clear there. That's why I'm asking. I don't know if it's worth worrying about. Um.
We can also, um, make sure we are more clear on that when this comes back through with the subdivision plats and the site plans that we address that and make it more clear.
Bottom of page 10, it says LED lights should. Um, or at someplace on page 10, hold on.
It's there.
Um, it it talks about, but it 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 talks about. LED parking lot should be provided. Why aren't we requiring LED parking lots? Not saying they kind of would be nice, but they don't have to do it if they really don't want to.
Yeah, we could definitely change that. I think that's, uh, it should be a show.
Okay. And then I've got another discussion item, but that'll, I'll wait till after the public hearing on that one.
All right. Is that all from you? Okay, cool. Councilmember Whitlock?
So Chair, do we want to ask all our questions now or let him finish? What?
Are you, was, did you have more of the?
No, I was done.
Oh, he was done. Okay. So yes, ask away.
All right. I'm looking at not actual pages. I'm looking at what comes up in Prime Gov. So on page nine, it shows a semi truck. In a roundabout because those calm people supposedly, that's what traffic engineers tell me. I don't find them calming. But I want to make sure that we're triple sure that those semis can go there because otherwise this is going to create a problem. So how have we ensured that that we know that that's the right amount of space for those semis? What guarantee are you giving me?
Uh, it's been reviewed by our engineer and our traffic engineer. Um, and they verified that that's, uh, showing the modeling that the semi can go around at the designed roundabout.
Yeah.
I'm trusting our engineers on that.
I I want it on the record that I'm a little concerned. I I don't think roundabouts and semis are a good match. Um. So I I I, yeah, I wouldn't put it there. Uh, page 14. And this has kind of already been asked, but I really didn't get an answer. So maybe it's not for you, but for the developer when he gets up there, I want to know what we're going to do. Uh, for those parking spots that are supposed to be public parking spots that they don't become overflow for the apartment. Because the apartment gets 1.4, I think.
Correct.
Parking stalls per unit. And if I have mom and dad and teenage son, that's three cars. And it's hard to get three cars in 1.4 spaces.
If you stack them.
Yeah. And if we were in somewhere in Asia, that would be great. We probably would be doing that, but we're not. Um, page 27, I just want to thank you, Taylor. I I liked what you had in my packet. There was extra information that I haven't seen before. And so all I can conclude, which I shouldn't do because nursing school teacher told me not to, but assume that you put it there. So part of it was showing me the tax difference between what it's owned for and what the rezone would do and what that would bring in for property tax. Maybe Denise helped you.
I would actually love to hit credit for that, but that's all from the applicant and that's a requirement.
Well, good job, Ben. Um, anyway, I I thank you and I would encourage you when you're doing your packets, that'd be a handy thing to include.
Yeah, we we liked it. It was handy for us to see as well. So I think that's been.
So if they don't, maybe we could do it. Page 28, while I appreciate the park is second, I wish it was second to commercial. I wish commercial was going in first actually instead of residential. Because the residential that we are putting in are apartments. And I don't remember who gave me the book and I loaned it to Mr. Anderson, so I can't look at it. But it actually showed a decline in, um, number of people seeking apartments. So. And what I'm being told in the Southwest Quadrant is that that would, that that the ideal thing is that that's for employee housing, right? If I don't have places for the employees to work, it's kind of the chicken and the egg thing. Um, page 31, thank you for having the utility plan in a format. Um, that when I expanded it, I could read it. Sometimes when we get stuff in our packets. I go to it to expand it and it's so blurry, I can't see it. So I don't know who did that, but thank you. And mostly this is for the applicant, but also for staff. I was ecstatic to see that the geotech report was included with this. And we know on our west side that it's an issue and I want to see it before I say yes or no. So mostly thank you for what's in the packet.
Thank you, question. All right, Councilmember Green thought of one more question for you.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I, I'm going to come back. On all of this concept, it's got the buildings that are three or four story building, four, four story buildings. How do we reconcile the concept plan and the 331 apartments on 19 acres, which works out to be 16 point something to 17 acres? Where the Echo Ridge apartment immediately to the east is our, a part of it is R110. And the southwest quadrant zone specifically says, medium, and this is in 13, 5N, 5C1, C1. The intent is to create a vibrant mix of appropriate residential uses using proper planning procedures, yada, yada, yada. Then it goes on to say in number one, medium density housing up to 7.5 units per acre used in areas as standalone, single family, or as a buffer adjacent to existing or planned residential that is lower in density than five units per acre. Echo Ridge is R110. That is four units to an acre. How can we justify 16 units per acre when the ordinance specifically says there has to be a buffer of 7.5 units per acre to buffer between the lower, that, that lower residential density that's less than five units per acre? It is 13, 5N, 5C1.
So I'll, I'll have to pull that code and look at it and pull up the notes when we did the review. I know we did do a review of the density. So I just need to find whether that I can't recall off the top of my head. Maybe, I think Larry might have some information on that.
So if you recall from the work meetings, that was the purpose of the park was to be the buffer between the single family and the multifamily. So if the actual wording of the code is adjacent, the park is adjacent to the R110 and not the multifamily.
Okay, so what we're doing is using this little skinny narrow part that's probably 40 or 50 feet wide and calling that the buffer and then just saying we can do whatever the heck we want with density.
120 feet wide, something like that.
Okay.
Seven acres.
I'm not a fan of that, but okay.
All right. Any further questions for staff? Let's invite the applicant up to just give a quick little presentation on this as well. And then we'll have the public comment.
Good evening, council. Ben Sestrand with the Gardner Group. Very grateful to be in front of you today. It's been a long time. We've been working on this with staff and really a lot of just express gratitude to staff for, for their patience and feedback that we've got as we've gone through this process. The southwest quadrant is a new zone that was created and the rezone process, this is the first time we've gone through it. And so council member Whitelock, to your point, I wish I could take credit for a lot of the, this package, but a lot of it was done just by the requirements placed by staff and us as a development team on what do we need in order to have all the information necessary to make this rezone. It definitely was a learning curve. I mean, we, as you can kind of see, a lot of the information here is kind of at a site plan level and it was hard to not just go get into the weeds of the site plan. But I want to be very clear, what, what you're looking at tonight is as high level as we thought we could keep it without going into the granular detail of the site plan. We very much look forward to coming back to you with the site plan application where we'll have a lot of these discussions and, and respond more closely to a lot of the comments. I mean, I think, now to transition and maybe to start to respond to a lot of the, the feedback we've gotten here tonight, specifically council member Shelton, I think a good example is where you're, the road, that connection to Echo Ridge, that we have really gotten to know Echo Ridge HOA, that neighborhood, they have been very vocal. I think the most vocal they've been is about that road and that connection. They've definitely expressed a lot of concerns to us about that. It's something we're, we're happy to address and look into further, try to design the right way to, to make it feel, to dissuade traffic from going through their, their neighborhood. As you saw in the traffic study, we, we don't think it's a logical route for, for our users, but still we would take any measure at that site plan level to, to figure out how to mitigate that or make any changes, you know, staff or, or you would like to see. We're, we're very open. We want to, we want to be good neighbors. On that note, council member Green, to your point on the, on the buffering, when we created this, the southwest quadrant zone, we have the goal of really trying to maximize the commercial area possible in this area. And we want to be good neighbors because there is existing residential there. So we're trying to walk that line. And this specific area, this 20 acres is because there was a desire for a park. That's how we thought of buffering that and getting everything to work. But if, if you would rather see, I know the residents are happy, you know, very pleased with the park. But if, if you'd like to see something different or that lower density housing there instead, that's something we would be happy to talk about. So. So, and I'm just going to kind of, I'm trying to remember everyone's to your, your conversation or your comment on the, the roundabout. The roundabout is, it's pivotal for us to, that that works for my industrial and where, you know, manufacturing users. If that doesn't, then I have a real problem leasing space. And so we've studied at length, we're comfortable with, it, it's been increased, the size of that roundabout, it's much larger than your typical roundout would be. And, and we've studied that extensively with semi trucks and we feel confident that it will work from our, for our tenants standpoint. So I feel comfortable with that. I know that's not a great answer, but we're comfortable from a developer standpoint with the roundabout. From a phasing question, really the residential phasing would come in, it would be all, for all intents and purposes, one big phase. It would just take, I mean, we're showing 12 buildings there. It would just take time to get to each one. So while they're shown as phase one A and one B, it would really all be kind of done in one swoop, starting from the north and, and working our way south. So, and the park would be delivered as the, the units adjacent to the park, that section of the park would be delivered is the idea. I know I'm forgetting things. In terms of phasing with the commercial compared to the residential, we really want to get going on the commercial as soon as possible as well. About a year ago, I would have said we would be going spec, you know, without a tenant in tow and getting a project going. Right now, the market's cooled. There's not as many tenants making decisions. Boyer built that million square foot building directly to our south. And that, that's been done for, for almost eight months and it's still, they haven't signed a lease yet. So we're, we're very much aware of that. We're, we're monitoring that. So on the commercial side, right now with the market is we're really looking at doing build to suits. So if a specific user comes in, if a manufacturer's looking and competing with another space, we're trying to pitch them to come here as opposed to just building something, kind of the field of dreams approach of build it and they will come. We're, we're kind of in the build to suit category right now, whereas the apartments, we're still seeing a really big need for those. And, and so we would get going on those as soon as possible. I'm sure I'm missing things. Are there any questions I didn't address?
Council member Green.
So I'm going to go back to that. It's not something that I'm probably going to fall on my sword over because there's another issue that I will. The, but it seems to me that when we were talking about some of these concepts prior to, that the first row of buildings was actually going to be shorter, and that doesn't show this in your plans, but the first row was going to be shorter. And then the buildings were going to increase in height as we got back. Have you guys abandoned that? Is that what we're doing?
No, I, and I don't know if that's slides available. I don't know who's driving where we, where we kind of show the building footprints. On the commercial side, we're still staying really flexible just because we're trying to appeal to any one user and what they're going to need. But the idea would be from that road, from Wells Park goes up to 67 and connects to New Bingham. From there, we kind of have some hard angles too, that aren't 90 degrees. So smaller flex buildings would fit there as well as like, we want to do some commercial, like some retail on the corner. And then we would scale into some of the bigger box stuff from that point. Oh, sorry. Misunderstood. Yeah. And, and that would be just, and again, we're trying to make that site work and, and the layout. And so with the park being where it is, we just try to set back those buildings as far as we possibly can from the housing. But that's, that's really where we're at there.
Council member Lamb. Do you foresee a lot of semi traffic on Wells Park Drive coming from your commercial?
We'll look at the traffic study. I, I don't want to speak offhand, but yeah, I think there'd be a fair amount. I mean, what really they, I'd see them using is more of that 6900 West. That's, that's currently in place between the Amazon. Semis are going to avoid a roundabout or a 90 degree turn where they can. And so I envision most traffic being pushed there. But again, when we come with a site plan, we'll do a study and make sure that's the case.
It was ironic because when I heard council member Whitelock mention that this morning, and this is a little bit different than a semi, but a construction truck with a long trailer bed tried to go through the McDonald's drive through ahead of me.
Wow.
And it shouldn't have.
Ambitious.
And it was this close to taking out their, their menu board.
Yeah.
And I'm just like, so when I heard this, I'm like, I wonder if those semis, you know, fill the same way. So it, it is something to think about because those semis are a lot longer than that truck was.
Absolutely. Yes.
All right. I think one other question that, or that was brought up that, that you may, maybe want to address is the parking in the park, parking lots.
Yes.
Because I mean, this neighborhood is going to be in an apartment sandwich, right? It's got apartments already existing on the northeast side and then it's going to have apartments on the west side. That's not in and of itself a bad thing. I, I don't think. But, but that other apartment complex, they park on the street, up and down streets because there's not enough parking places. I guarantee this park, parking is going to fill up with residents.
Okay. And, and that's something we're open to, to brainstorming a solution for. I think a knee jerk is like, yeah, we can have our HOA, our property managers for the apartment monitor that. I think it's something, you know, as, as park staff is there, something that could be looked at too. But I think it's going to be, I don't know the solution to that, but I, I understand. And one comment also from Echo Ridge has been the parking because of the neighbors to, to the north. They, when they went through and got approved, they were granted a, a contingency, I guess, or a a reduction in parking.
Okay.
And we know that's something that's not working and it's really having an adverse effect on them. So we're, we're definitely trying to park to market. I mean, that, that is the constraint here is, is trying to make sure we're parked accordingly. So we're not creating any street parking or anything like that.
Perfect. And then council member Shelton with a question.
Just along that line of the parking. There's really not any public transit out there. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't be granting lower parking than what we already have. And I'm not sure if this is the case out there already or not, but I know that in some apartment buildings, a tenant will get one, one parking spot and then they get the option to purchase or, or rent a second parking spot. And so in lieu of doing that, they'll go out to the street and park. And I'd like to just, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think we could touch on this on our site plan too. But right now, I'm not, as I run like my numbers on this, we're not counting on any income from parking itself. Like we're not planning on leasing out stalls.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing any other questions. So we'll go to the public hearing now.
Thank you.
This public hearing, by the way, follows the same rules of engagement as the, as the citizen comment period. You have three minutes if you'd like to address the council on this issue. I think it's important to, to, to remember that we're talking about the masterment, master development agreement and plan and the general land use plan and rezone, not necessarily the site specific stuff that are site plan related. I know it's a fine line between a master development plan and a site plan, but just to keep that in mind. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing if you'd like to address the council on any of those, basically four things. Go ahead and come on up. Mr. Jones and me.
I guess since I'm here, Steve Jones. Just a couple quick. One is, I think there is an issue with parking and
My bad.
The reality is, and I see it in my residential neighborhood is there's, there's people renting rooms, multiple rooms, multiple people in, that are not related, renting these apartments and they each will have a vehicle. So actually I look at it and go, your 1.4 is probably low for today's. I mean, I got a neighbor next door to me that I got six cars and half of them are in front of my house. That's the reality. And there's nothing, as a city, we seem to be able to do about it. This is one place where you can do something about it. And that is, you need to have adequate parking to take care of it. The other is roundabouts. I love roundabouts, but West Jordan notoriously has small roundabouts. Humbly speaking, I don't care what your traffic guy says, they're too small. I can take you to one and show you a double lane roundabout in South Jordan, and I can take you to a single lane roundabout in West Valley that are both adequate for semis and multiple lane traffics. And they don't, they're, they're just right. But they take a little bit more real, real estate to get that flow to go. I think West Jordan needs to really hard, look hard at the roundabouts and put in adequate roundabouts. I remember in a city council meeting years ago, where they were riding with the snowplows and the snowplows couldn't even make it around it because their blades stick out and was hitting the curb and, and destroying the curb. So it is an issue that I think West Jordan needs to address. Thanks.
Thank you. Further public comment. Go ahead and state your name.
Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. Steve stole the item that I was going to hit on. But as much as I appreciate the traffic engineering, the calculations that they may have done for the semis, I would love to see 10 different snowplow drivers go through there with the blade down. And if none of them hits the curb on either side, then I'd be, then I'd be good to go. But that's kind of my litmus test. Making sure that our snowplows can get through blade down without any damage to any infrastructure or anything else that would cause taxpayers additional funding. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'd like to address the council on this. All right. See none in the room? Anybody online? Mr. Anderson?
Looking at the screen, there is no one online that has raised their hand. Chair Jacob.
Perfect. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion and motions. We'll go to council member Green.
While, while I'm concerned on the density a little bit, because I think that the original talk was to have a lower density buildings and then move to another couple of rows of high density buildings. It's not something that I'm going to fall on my sword on. But let me address the, the two concerns that I have. One is, and I think we've, I don't want to beat the, the dead horse. And that is, we want the public to be able to use that park. And if there's no parking because all the apartments take it, then the, the park becomes a private park for the apartments. But we, but it's a public park. And so I have that concern. But the one that I think that we have to include in the MDP. And honestly, I did probably one that I will vote no on the MDP if I can't get something in the MDP on this. Wells Park Road is going to have a bunch of trucks on it. And there's a residential neighborhood there with Echo Ridge. I believe that we have to have traffic, traffic calming measures at Wells Park Road and Leah Heather Road. And traffic calming measure at Wells Park and 6400 West. If we don't have those, the trucks will go down the road and all we will start to hear from all the Echo Ridge neighbors is how the noisy the trucks are. The other thing, and I think we can enforce this and we can put this in an MDP or the MDA or in the ordinance itself. And we don't have to wait for you, Dot, on this one because this will be a city street. I want to make sure that we ban engine breaks and on-street parking from Prosperity Road to 6900 West. That way we don't get any trucks, park any trucks or anybody, but particularly That way, we don't get any trucks, part, any trucks or anybody, but particularly refrigerated trucks, parking next to a residential neighborhood, and they won't be able to use their engine brakes next to a residential neighborhood that we're having problems with Copper Fields. So I think that those two things are a must for this development, that the council can set that policy in the MDA, that we need traffic calming measures on Wells Park at two intersections. That could be just as much as a bold crossing and, um, no engine brakes or no on-street parking between Prosperity and sixty-nine-hundred west. Um, my other comment is, the site plan's not going to come back to us. So if there's some major things that we want right, we've got to do that, we've got to do that and fix those because the site plan, um, nor, isn't that right? The site plan goes back to the Planning Commission, not us.
That's correct. So it'll go to the Planning Commission. It'll just follow our code unless you make any, uh, specific requirements.
So, yeah. So I, I want to make sure, and since site plans don't include traffic calming, I want to be able to make sure that the council, the direction is here, heard that we have, and I hope the rest of you agree. I mean, that's the, that was one of the complaints we heard out at Copper Fields the other night with Ninety is South and with New Bingham Highway is engine brakes and refrigerator trucks. And that neighbor, that, you know, that Echo Ridge neighborhood is right there in the middle of an industrial area. Uh, and we've got to, we've got to protect that neighborhood and keep it as quiet as we can. And, and so that's why I'm, that's why I'm pushing so hard is because the residents in those areas don't think, I mean, if the Echo Ridge neighbors or anything like the people across the street at Copper Fields, they don't think we listen to them. And we've got to listen to this part of the traffic and keep the traffic calm and keep the parking and the refrigerator trucks and engine brakes away. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I will be voting yes on the rezone tonight. As I was on the council previously and watched for two years, this is exactly what the council wanted to have, was a buffer between the homes and, and the commercial. So I think the rezone is correct, um, but I agree with what, um, Councilmember, uh, Green said, that we need to make sure that we're not causing noise to these people in this neighborhood. And once again, I'll reiterate, whoever's making the decision, that ninety-five-forty south is going to affect six to eight homes that we're all going to hear from if that's open to the apartment complex. So I, I would strongly suggest that we find a way to mitigate that today rather than waiting until two years from now when, you know, this is done and we're hearing complaints. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. We've already had problems with that neighborhood with a company and their trucks. We've heard a lot from them. So, so it, it is a very big concern. But it is, this was put in as a buffer. Um, Councilmember Green is correct. When we first met with the developer, it was going to have a lower stacked how residential. That's up to the chair. So basically, I agree with Councilmember Green, but I think that's going to be a, um, really technical motion, so I hope he's the one that wants to make it.
All right. I'm going to just go ahead and speak in favor tonight of, um, the concepts here and what we, what we have to vote on tonight. I think the details as, that have been brought up that are, you know, slightly concerning really don't have anything to do with the zone or the future land use map. Uh, the, you know, the, the master development agreement, master development plan, like I said, it's a fine line, right? Between that and a site plan and exactly which issues are brought up where and, and that. But I'm, I'm confident that, uh, that the issues that we have are relatively minor and can be worked out through the process with the zoning department, zoning administrator, and the, the planning department, the inspectors and those kinds of things. I think, um, they've heard what we've said, and I think we've got, we're on the record. I think we're, I think we're pretty good. So I'll be, I'll be in favor of these tonight, depending on how, uh, interesting this motion gets. So we'll go to Councilmember Green.
I, I, I just want to make one comment and then I'll make the motion. I do agree with you that there's a fine line between the MDP and the site plan. But what we, but the MDP is passed by ordinance. That becomes an ordinance. Site plans aren't ordinances, and we can have all the talk in the world tonight. And if somebody doesn't, um, think that they, they ought to do something, they can completely ignore it and they'll go back and say, the MDP says this, and that's what they have to follow. So that, that's why I want a couple of these things added to the MDP in generalities is, is so that it, they can't wiggle out of them.
I got you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Bloom before we get to a motion. She's, uh, got her hand raised. Councilmember Bloom.
I just, I thank you. I just want to say I'm in favor of it, and I appreciate all the hard work, um, that has gone into this so far. You know, when it comes to neighborhoods and building things and stuff like that, it's the small things that mean the most to residents. And so when we say certain things that seem like a big deal, but they're not, but they really are a big deal. And I appreciate you listening to what we are saying, what the staff is saying, because, you know, this is going to be around for generations. We want to get it right the first time. So thank you.
Appreciate that comment. Thank you. And we'll go back to Councilmember Green.
There are two ward, there are two ordinances here. Um, one is the master development, um, plan and agreement, and one is a general, uh, one is the general plan and the zone. Actually, one, the, the second one, we, we don't make those two motions together. So I will make the motion on the first one to approve ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen, um, requesting a master development, uh, approve, uh, yeah, approve. I think it's approving a master development agreement plan, um, with the amendment, um, under the commercial design standards on page four and five, the DRC should be amended to read zoning administrator. And I think we were going to put in parentheses for minor deviations. So in, in, replace DRC with zoning administrator with, and then in parentheses for minor deviations. amend line seventeen of the ordinance code to Gardner West Jordan L.C. And amend and add to the master development agreement, calming, traffic calming measures will be placed at, uh, on Wells Park Road at Lee Heather and Wells Park Road and sixty-four-hundred west with no engine brakes or on-street parking between Prosperity and sixty-nine-hundred west. And a traffic calming measure at ninety-five-forty south where it exits the development. That'll help address Chad's issue.
And there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Um, our city attorney would like to chime in really quick just for some clarification to the motion. Go ahead.
Can I just, uh, offer a, a point of concern with this? If we're doing this with the expectation that the applicant would be responsible for those traffic calming measures on Wells Park Road, I don't think that we're in a position to put that kind of expectation requirement into place. We'd be able to do that on the property that they're developing, but on an existing road, I don't think that we are in a position to, to make that as a request.
The master development plan shows that they are work, they are doing the road, that whole Wells Park Road in that orange stretch on the map, and it says they are responsible for that. That's why I'm saying that is because I'm referring back to that that says this is a proposed road. I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to do it. And, and the, the imp, and I would also respectfully disagree with the fact that this is an, what we're requiring is a couple of traffic calming measures that are directly related to the impact on the neighborhood from a new development. And we can require, um, a, we can require, uh, that on, we can require the direct impacts to be mitigated on the developer.
Councilmember Lamb.
So I, I have to disagree a little bit with you on that one, Councilmember Green, in the fact that the developer is developing the land and the apartments and the parking lots. And yes, they do have a, a say on the road, but when it comes to traffic mitigation, it falls on the city. So I, I don't think the developer is going to go out there and make sure that there's signs up on the road that say you can't park here or you can't park here with your engine brakes. That falls under C, not under the developer, under this agreement. So I'm not sure how we can put on the developer. That's my question.
And, and it's a good point. I, I do want to bring up, uh, in the master development agreement, and maybe, um, Josh or Taylor can answer this. Uh, it does say Wells Park Road along the south side of the existing subdivision is a future road part of the project. But that road's there. Are they going, is, is the plan to make changes to that road?
Yeah. So, um, those red, if we have the, uh, exhibit, I don't know if Warren can give us back to the exhibit with the phases. But I talked to the applicant.
There you go, right there.
And on these new roads, these red ones, you know, they're happy to do those, uh, any traffic calming measures. The other question was, um, traffic calming measures can mean a lot of things. Are, are we going to trust, like, working with our traffic engineer and what he deems as appropriate? Or do we need more direction there?
Yeah, and valid, valid points. Um, this is interesting because this picture is not the same as some of the other pictures in the master development plan. Some of them show the road goes all the way to sixty-four-hundred west as part of the project. Here's, here's the flip side of that, and this is a discussion to the motion that I'll just bring up, is Councilmember Lamb has a good point. If that's already an existing city road, we can direct any traffic calming measures whenever we want. We can ask the mayor's staff to put them in. You know, work with the staff, work with administration. They can put in traffic calming measures on any city road at any time, whenever. It doesn't have to be part of a master development agreement or anything else. So if, if we decide that those are necessary, either now or in the future, the city can do it. Now, yeah, that's at city's expense instead of developer's expense. But I mean, this, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's a, it's a relatively very small dollar amount. So Councilmember Green.
To address two things. One, I think that we have to, to leave the traffic calming measures to the, the engineers. Um, but I think that I, that we get the point that there's a couple of intersections there that we need to just keep the traffic down. But the fact of the matter is that the increased traffic that's going to affect this neighborhood is going to be directly because by this development. And so, yeah, you're right. It is, it is a current exists, existing street. But the, the developer should bear some cost on the impacts of their development. You know, that's, that's why we, that's why we, we have the MDAs and those kind of things is to try to mitigate, um, the impacts of a development. Councilmember Lamb, you know, part of this, even the motion was to look at traffic calming measures at ninety-five-forty because you want a solution for the neighbors that are coming out of there. Well, that's how we direct, that's how we direct the staff and the developer to look at the, at that particular exit and put that in the MDA to say there's, there needs to be a solution there. I'm not, I'm not defining what the solution is. What I'm saying is, is that a good traffic calming measure would help alleviate a lot of those issues um, on that neighborhood. And those are impacts that I, I don't think are, that, that are unreasonable to ask of the developer to, to help buffer the, the, uh, the Echo Ridge neighborhood. Otherwise, we just say, well, we didn't listen to neighbors and, and we can, we just let the developer run roughshod over the neighborhood again.
Right. There is a motion on the table and a second. Is there further discussion to that motion of anybody besides me? So I will go ahead and have some discussion if nobody else does. I think I'm going to vote no on this motion, uh, with the caveat that I would vote to approve as is with these amendments on the, on the screen. Because I think all of the issues that, that you added in are things that we can address later if and when it becomes a problem. Now, we're assuming it's going to be a problem. We're, we're saying, hey, we think, we think there's X, Y, and Z problem that this is going to come up. It may or may not. And if it does, I think it's, it's going to be well within the city's authority to address those issues as they come up. They're going to be public roads, city roads. We can install speed bumps on city roads if there's a problem, or some other traffic calming measures. Work with the neighborhood, that kind of thing. So other, so without putting further onus on the developer to mitigate what seven laypeople kind of think future issues might become, ra, rather than lean on the, you know, the engineers and the, the people that have, you know, gone to school for this kind of thing and, and stuff like that. I would, I would defer to the, to the experts on this and then let the city address the things as they come up if there are issues. Uh, just my comment. Councilmember Whitelock.
In fairness to that statement, Chair, um, when the developer comes in, they're only looking at that area. They're not, they're not looking, and neither is staff. We saw that with Drake's. They don't look past the development, and there are consequences to those actions. So when a development comes in, it has a bigger impact than just the borders of that development. And I think we need to be cognizant of that, and it doesn't come back to us for anything. Once we voted tonight, that's, that's our say. We're done. And so I don't think the ask is that much. We're just saying, hey, can you look a little more at the traffic? Because while we're not traffic engineers, we are recipients of phone calls and emails and visits that say, this isn't working. And, and I would rather have West Jordan be proactive than reactive.
Councilmember Green. That's, uh, she just stole my words. Thank you, Councilmember Whitelock. The, the fact of the matter is, is that we create developments all the time, and we don't plan for the traffic. And then what we hear are people on Lexington and other places all throughout the city about how bad my traffic is because everybody speeds down the road, that if we put the traffic calming measures in beforehand, we wouldn't hear those complaints and the neighbors would be happier. So I, I, that's why, that's why I, I just like to be more proactive here, uh, than, um, than wait till the traffic gets bad enough and then we're reactive, and then the residents have to do a petition. And it takes two years for the traffic study and the traffic calming measures, uh, to take place because that's the way we, that, that's the way we do it in the city. Um, and, and then the residents just get mad at us, well, that white wouldn't be able to write in the first place. So that's my, that's my last comment.
Councilmember Bedore.
Uh, and this just comes again from someone brand new to a lot of this, but I do see things on, on both sides of this. Um, where I am, the, one of the reasons I ran for city council is because I was tired of seeing us fix things later instead of fixing them at a present time. What I'm wondering, and you, uh, folks who've been here certainly longer than I have and understand these things, would know better, but, uh, Chair Jacob, is, is there a wording in what Councilmember Green put together that might be better, that's maybe less full directive? And I don't know if there is, but, but something that at least states that we are going to look into it now, that maybe we can put into it, that we'll approve this if the city will then also put in the, um, you know, the proper, uh, studies in place and ready so that it's not two years from now, if it's an if, now we start the process. Can we, is there something we can do to that? And again, this is just coming from somebody new to all of this and trying to see the best way to handle this.
Yeah, understood. That's a good question. It's a good point. I'll call on myself. That's a good question, a good point. Is, could we, could we say something along the lines of, leaving it a little more general, something along the lines of we'll approve this with the caveat that you, that there is traffic calming measures, you know, put in place. I don't know how to do that and leave more of it up to the discretion of the traffic engineers without leaving it up to the discretion of the traffic engineers, which is what it already does. You know, so, um, so I don't know if there's a, if there's a better way to do that. Go ahead.
My thought is basically that we just don't leave it blank so that we are run over with the fact that you didn't have anything there. My thought is basically that we just don't leave it blank so that we are run over with the fact that you didn't have anything there. And again, new to this, I want to make sure that what we're doing, what Councilmember Green and, and Whitelock are saying obviously is, is valid to the point of if there is a problem with this, and we've seen this in other cities. So there, it's not an unreasonable thing to think that there will be problems. But can we plan for the problems and maybe have some things in place early? And, and just, or even have it on record that this is what the council is saying since, again, to what Councilmember Whitelock was saying. We don't see it later. It doesn't come back to us. We only can approve what, what we can approve. And if we don't make our stipulations now, then we can't later is just my point in that.
Yeah, and well said. And, and, and just a flip side of that is in most zones, we don't even see this much. In most zones, we just see R one eight, yeah, that's good. And we don't tackle where roads are, where the speed bumps are, where the storm drains are. We only get into that level of granularity if, if it's more of one of these more nebulous zones where we give the developer more flexibility to do different things. If this was just a, hey, we're going to take this chunk and make, approve high density residential. And then over here, we're going to improve, approve, you know, industrial. And that's what they asked for and that's what we go with. We don't get a say on any of this. So in general, we do lean on the administration and the experts to make those, make those calls. So anyway, I think we've, I think, I think the horse has been relatively beat. We'll go to Mr. Lee real quick.
Mr. Chair, if I may add just a couple of comments that might help. If the, if the, if the motion were limiting the traffic measures to the areas within the development, we will study the areas outside of the development for impact and traffic, for traffic calming. The, the project will pay impact fees that can pay for that impact offsite for traffic calming. We often think of using impact fees just for road widening, but it could be used for offsite traffic calming as well. So there is some funds that would be available for that type of offsite traffic calming if it becomes needed. We do have traffic calming standards and those standards require a demonstrated need for the traffic calming. Often we get requests for traffic calming that's presumed by one or two residents, but not proven with the data. So we have that standard that we have to show up first. As far as the, the comments about parking and parking and other things offsite, we can address some of that offsite now on public roads if we anticipate problems. But as far as this, this is just a rezone. And so some of those offsite, we can, we can handle that.
Corbin, it's not a rezone. This is an MDA. We, we're getting granularity to approve streetlights, but we can't talk about a potential traffic problem. Look, we, we can, the, the neighborhood is going to have impacts and we're trying to solve those impacts. And unfortunately, the, the problem that we have is that what we get is we get neighbors who then band together and do a petition and it comes to the city. And I've seen those the last couple of years where, well, it's going to take two years to go out and get the traffic study data. It's going to do, we don't do anything with anticipated traffic study data. We don't say, what can we do to help this neighborhood that's going to have all these trucks running up and down it because Wells Park's going to go through? And, and what we're saying is let's just push off the problem until later. And when we get some money, we might look at it. Well, that's what happens with a lot of neighborhoods and that's why they're mad at us. And, 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 and what's funny is, is that when we're designing these roads, particularly one where Wells Park will hit Leah Heather Drive, that, that intersection right in there to have the traffic calming measure, that's just part of this project. And, and it, it would, it will enhance the, the, by, by doing the right traffic calming measures, it will enhance the development. It will enhance, it will enhance the area. And, and that's where I'm frustrated.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Mr. Chandler, in the master development agreement, can't there be agreement between the city and the developer? Couldn't we have it in there that says something to the effect that the city and the developer will? That they could agree to something there?
I mean, the city can certainly agree to something, but I don't think we're in a position to require that from the developer when it's an offsite thing in this kind of a circumstance. Sure, I mean, we could do it and ask them if they were willing to do it. But, but again, as a requirement or a condition, I don't think we're in a position to push for that.
So I have a.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question related to that then. Would, would the motion as, as it is currently on the table be considered a taking? Would it get us into some issues where it could be challenged legally and then we're committing more resources to legal defense, et cetera?
I don't recall what the wording of the motion is if it's on the table at this point. I apologize.
We'll have it read back shortly. Yeah, Cindy, do you have the motion? She was hoping that I didn't ask that question so she could go back and read it again, listen to it again.
This is what I got. Approve ordinance number twenty four thirteen approving a master development agreement plan with amendment that the ERC be amended to read zoning administrator for minor variations. Amend line seventeen of the ordinance code Gardner West Jordan L C. Add to traffic, add traffic calming measures will be placed on Wells Park Road at Lee Heather and no engine breaks on sixty nine hundred West and traffic calming measure at, and then I missed the south.
Or was it traffic? Go ahead. You know what? That works and it leaves that, that the word, the, the amendment that you worked there works fine and it leaves sixty four hundred West out of it and it keeps it outside the development.
Okay.
So yeah, that, 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 that motion will work for me.
Okay, so leave off the last part and traffic calming measures at blah, blah, blah.
Okay, Mr. Davidson.
I apologize. I don't, I don't want to belabor the discussion. I think it's important to identify that the city has set objective traffic calming standards and we try to adhere to them across the entire community. So when we have, for example, a street that does not meet current traffic calming requirements and we build traffic calming into something, into a project, we're going to have other residents who are going to come to us and say, I want traffic calming. Our response is going to be you don't meet the requirements. And then they're going to potentially cite something that we have already built into an agreement with. So we create a double standard by way of approving, for example, calming measures without following objective criteria by which we make a determination if they are appropriate or not.
Except good urban design says planned traffic calming measures in the urban design.
And I'm not just.
Current urban standard planning with the current.
And I don't think we're disagreeing with what is good urban standards. I think we are just simply suggesting we set the standard and we apply the standard across all streets in the community and not just specific streets where we believe there will be a problem. So you're not going to hear a disagreement from me as to whether standards are appropriate. It's the appropriate application of the standard in making decisions as to what qualifies and what doesn't qualify.
Okay, we have Councilmember Bedore is hot next.
Just, so really, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying is you're saying if we put that into this measure, we make a problem for all the other measures that we did that we didn't have this in. And now people are upset that we didn't apply the same standard.
For example, if I may, we have streets in the community where there are, we've, we've installed traffic calming measures. We have adjacent streets. Neighbors are coming to us and saying, why do they have a traffic calming device? And we don't have a traffic calming device. We say, well, we have these objective criteria. We've overlaid the criteria to your particular street. It doesn't meet the criteria. Then they say, well, why does the street next to me have a calming measure and we don't? In some cases, I can't confirm in all cases, it's because an arbitrary decision was made in the past to place a calming measure there to, for example, meet the concerns of a few. But there wasn't any science behind it. So I think we create, we solve a problem in, in one hand with the introduction of calming measures in a project by way of an MDA. But we also create another problem. So sometimes the wake we leave is greater than the water we cut in the first place.
Mr. Davidson, then you're saying is that we then look at this without that amendment and then trust in the city that they will put in the same requirements and stuff.
I mean, I, I think in, in this type of circumstance with traffic calming and the broad, broad number of requests we have for calming, we're in a reactive mode of trying to address issues where they are a significant concern. We don't know what the volumes are going to be. We don't know what the speeds are going to be along this road. We don't know if there's going to be an accident, if there are pedestrian crossings, so on and so forth. All of these things build into that criteria in making a determination as to whether or not a street warrants some sort of traffic calming.
So. Okay, we have a, a motion called a question. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second it. We'll have, this is a motion to call the question. This is not the question. So this is a motion to end debate and move to a vote.
Yes.
So now I will place the motion to call the question. Voting yes on this is not yes on the motion. It is yes to go to a vote on the motion.
Yes.
And it requires two thirds vote. So all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we got six to one. I'll rule on that motion passes. So we'll go to a vote on the motion. Yeah, Councilmember Green was the nay. Six to one.
That means we, because we're all holding an electronic meeting, it has to be a roll call vote.
I don't know that I agree, but okay, we'll go ahead and do.
Electronic meetings with a negative vote are required to have a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on the, on the, we'll go ahead and roll call vote on the motion to call the question.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Councilmember Green? Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob or Chair Jacob? And Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes five to two.
Five to two, and that is the two thirds requirement. So now we'll go to the vote on the motion.
Councilmember Bloom?
No.
Vice Chair Lamb?
No.
Councilmember Bedore?
No.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
No.
Chair Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Okay, I show the motion filled, one to six.
Councilmember Lamb?
I moved to approve ordinance twenty four thirteen requesting a master development agreement plan with the following amendments. What is written here with the two bullet points and to approve as is right now.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Bloom. Discussion to that motion. Let's try and keep it brief without rehashing all the same points. Councilmember Whitelock.
Just Councilmember Lamb, you didn't include for minor variations. Are you willing to add that to your motion?
After zoning administrator, it was supposed to say with my, for minor variations. After zoning administrator on this.
All right, so on the second line, where's the minor variations? Okay, so I move to approve twenty four thirteen written as is with the minor alterations on the first bullet point.
I'll second, I guess, I'll second that as well.
Okay. Clear as mud. Any discussion to that motion? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this. I had to use another block. Okay, Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Green? Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
I show the motion passes six to one. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we need a motion on ordinance twenty four fourteen, the general planned use and the rezone. Councilmember Shelton?
I move to approve ordinance number twenty four thirteen requesting a master.
Fourteen.
Oh, excuse me. I move to approve ordinance number twenty four fourteen. A general, a general plan land use map amendment from from light industrial and future park to Southwest Quadrant and rezone from agriculture. Twenty acre minimum lots, a twenty and light manufacturing M one to the Southwest Quadrant mixed use zone with the following amendments. Amend line fifteen of ordinance twenty four fourteen to Gardner West Jordan L C.
All right, we got a motion by Councilmember Shelton. Your mic's still hot, by the way.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lamb. Any discussion to the motion on the rezone and the land use map amendment? I am seeing none, so we'll go ahead and go to a vote on ordinance twenty four fourteen.
Councilmember Green?
No.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Thank you. I show the motion passes six to one.
All right, thank you. That was a good, robust discussion. I don't, I don't begrudge anybody that, that discussion. I think it was good to have and it was good to clarify some things. So it was great. And I think we landed in a good spot. All right, we'll go to public hearing now, six B. This is resolution twenty four dash zero one zero approving a service in lieu of fees agreement for the use of Ronwood Baseball Complex and Veterans Memorial Park Baseball Complex and the amount of forty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for Copper Hills Baseball League for the twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five seasons and end of season tournaments. We'll go to Dave Naylor for this one.
Actually, if I can jump in. We'll go to Alan Anderson for this one. So the Copper Hills Baseball League typically provides service in lieu of fees to use the city facilities during their baseball seasons. This has been done several years, even back when I was a council member. So what they're proposing is they have an agreement. So what you would really be doing is instead of a typical fee waiver, you're authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Copper Hills Baseball for them to provide service instead of paying fees to play at the Veterans Memorial Park. The president of the league is here and Dave Naylor is here if the council has any questions on this. It falls within the, you're, you're limited to one percent of the budget with six hundred and eighty four thousand dollars a year. You're not close to that. This amount is forty thousand two hundred and fifty for two baseball seasons.
Perfect. This is across two years. All right, questions for staff? We'll go to Councilmember Green.
Okay, so extremely technical question. And it's not that I'm opposed to granting the fee waiver, by the way. It's about time for baseball to start. Mr. Anderson, you just said that it authorizes the mayor to sign an agreement to, to do a contract in lieu of fees. The resolution does not have that language in it that allows the mayor to sign an agreement. So my question is, my first question is, we're the ones that have to sign the fees. And according to the ordinance, we're the ones that account for the fees with the report at the end. Is that agreement appropriate that it's signed by the mayor or two?
That it's signed by the mayor or two? Does that, uh, does the resolution twenty four dash ten? Require to have the specific language that says that the mayor is authorized to sign the agreement because that is missing?
I'm gonna ask Ja, or Mr. Chandler if he can chime in since I'm not an attorney.
I would say that the documents is prepared in the packet are fine. Uh, the resolution here is addressing the council's authority to waive the fees. Mayor has the authority to sign an agreement, can bind the city in the way that the agreement would. I think the important piece here is that the council is authorizing that waiver as the resolution directs. And it's not necessary for the resolution to authorize the mayor to sign something that the mayor has the authority to sign already.
All right, excellent. Let's go to Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. And this is really probably for the league. Um, I don't remember. You using veterans before. Is this new or, or did I just miss it in the past?
Come on up, Dave.
This, this fee waiver is, uh, mirroring a lot of what was in the past. They do have some overflow days that they schedule for Veterans Memorial. Yeah, their league is growing. They need more space and we have that space available.
And the other league is.
It's gone. Yes. And so that's why that space is available for, for the Copper Hills Baseball League to, to overflow into that is their league grows.
Kind of like when the NFL and the AFL merged, you know. Councilmember Green? This goes back to, uh, Mr. Chandler. The ordinance requires, uh, reports. At the end of the year from anybody who gets fee waiver. Are we? I'm not gonna, and we're gonna have a further discussion about fee waiver ordinance tonight anyways, so, but. If there's no report. Required in a form acceptable to the council. Then how does the baseball league report to the mayor? And is it the mayor's responsibility to take that report and determine if it's adequate? Are we shifting the council responsibilities onto the mayor? Where it's the, where clearly in the code, it is the council's responsibility to get that report. And determine if the, everything was done appropriately.
So with the ordinance giving that authority to the council, the council has the authority to ask for that report. You could delegate that authority to the mayor if you wished. Um, I'm, it's, it's your call.
But without that in the, without that in the resolution. Then we're saying that we are following current ordinance. We would have to delegate that to the mayor in the current resolution then, correct?
Right. The resolution doesn't change the ordinance.
Right. So if we're gonna delegate that to the mayor, then there ought to be something in the resolution that says the mayor's authorized to sign this or. Do something then, correct? Um, what am I missing?
Could be done in the resolution. I don't think it's necessary that it be done in a resolution. Could.
Councilmember Lamb?
Just a thought, maybe we don't have that report because this is a fee waiver. Where you have the arts council, it's a little bit different because they're getting budget from us where we're not handing over money to the baseball teams.
And like I said, when we, when we get to the discussions tonight in committee of the whole. When you look at the ordinance, it requires anybody who gets monetary or non-monetary assistance to do a report. I disagree with that, that. I want to change the ordinance tonight, but right now the current ordinance says you're stuck doing a report. Um, whether on a, on any sort of monetary or non-monetary assistance, the way I read it. So that's why I'm asking the questions. I don't want to do something outside the ordinance. Actually, any further questions, clarifying questions before the public hearing? Oh, Councilmember Shelton in the nick of time.
I, I'm just thinking, I can't imagine that the league wouldn't mind coming and giving us a report. There's no big deal to me. Right, right? Let's, let's allow them to give us a report. I think they'd love to do that for us.
Sure, that would be fine. Any further questions or comments for the? Before that we open the public hearing? I'm not seeing any. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Again, same rules of engagement apply here. You have three minutes to, uh, address this topic with the council. This is again, not a time really to engage in back and forth questions because. Chances are, we don't know the answers. Uh, just kidding. But you have, uh, three minutes. Go ahead and come on up and, and, um, state your name.
My name is Landon Potter. I am the president of the West Jordan Copper Hills Baseball League. I just want to thank you guys all for your previous support over the past several years. We serve eight hundred youth within West Jordan. We have sixteen volunteers on our board. We have over two hundred and seven coaches that volunteer. We are nonprofit. We are completely made up of volunteers. So we appreciate all the past support and. Anything that you guys have done for us in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room would like to address the council? Okay, we have one online who'd like to address the council. We have, uh, Mr. McConaughey. Can we get, are we able to get him pulled up? All right, Chris, you should be able to go ahead and unmute.
Awesome. You'd be able to hear me, right?
Yep.
All right, Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. Um, in addition to voicing support for this, I also wanted to say thank you to the league for all that they've done in the past. Especially for the fallen officers memorials that they, um, contributed back in twenty seventeen. Um, the leagues do a lot of good for kids, not just on the field, but throughout life in general. And a lot of good lessons are taught there. So obviously very supportive of this and would encourage approval of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one last chance. Anybody like online or in the room? Nobody else online? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to say thanks to the Copper Hills Baseball League for being here tonight. Uh, a lot of times in the past I've had people come and, or not people, but. Certain groups ask for fee waivers and they don't show up to even, uh, at the public to do that. Uh, secondly, uh, my son is in high school and he just joined the lacrosse team this year. He's never played lacrosse. But he has an opportunity here and I just love that he as a fifteen year old, sixteen year old kid. Can join with a bunch of other kids and they have a female lacrosse team as well. And they're out having fun and learning things just with the baseball league. I would rather have them out on the baseball field. Than at home playing video games or doing something else. And so this is great for not only our city. It's great for the kids to have this opportunity to, to do this. And, and once again, you know, the, the stuff that you guys do is amazing. Um, I, I don't know what other cities do, but, um, you guys go weighing above, weighing above what, uh, I, I would even expect. From your baseball league to fix those grounds. And, uh, once you get those nets up, I'm gonna come out and see your, uh, your batting cages. So thank you.
And I'll bring a bat. Councilmember Green? Councilmember Lamb made a comment and I'm gonna, uh, tack on to that, this. Little League baseball is important. And. I am not. Going to be one that allows this city. And, and I'm, I'm saying this to words for a couple of other cities who have raised the rates on their baseball field so high. That a couple of their, uh, a couple of their little leagues in that city are on the potential of closing. If any of you have read the Tribune the last week or so. And so, no, I'm, I'm, I look forward to this. And, uh. Allowing those eight hundred kids and two hundred and seven coaches. And the over abused umpires. Uh, I gotta, I'm a sports official. I'm a, I'm a football referee, basketball referee. And used to referee softball. Never done baseball. Uh, I don't want to get hit. But, uh, and, and the numerous, uh, referees, uh. Yes, uh, I, I think this is a, a, a great way. Uh, for the city. So, yeah, that's. And I'm not gonna allow this to happen, what other cities are doing to little league programs. So thank you. Excellent. Councilmember Shelton?
So my question to the council is, uh. Do we want to add into the motion, uh, a requirement or a request for, for a report? Or where are we at with that?
Let's go to Mr. Anderson.
Um, I've, I've talked, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Brandon?
Landon. I've talked to Landon, who's the president, and he said he'd be more than happy after the season to come back and give a report to the council. What I would say after reading two, six, three, reporting to the city council at a council meeting is what we've typically used with the arts council, with the chamber. Um, and I think, uh, having them come and report at the end of the season with what they've done meets what you've asked for in code two, six, three.
All right, and I'll make sure we get that on an agenda. Before the end of the year, so. That sounds good. Um, and I'll just make my two cents in here. Um, I was having a conversation with a friend the other day about regrets in life. One of my biggest regrets is quitting Little League baseball because I was good. And I gave up because I had friends that didn't play baseball and they wanted to do stuff with me and I thought that sounded like more fun. So. I quit baseball and I went and played with some friends across the street who moved like a year later, by the way. And, uh, yeah, one of my, one of my biggest regrets is I was Monday night sitting at the BYU UVU baseball game, freezing my tail off. Thinking I could have, I could have been a contender. But, uh, with that, uh, with that said, I'll move to approve resolution twenty four dash zero one zero. Approving the service in lieu of fees, uh, the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for Copper Hills Baseball League.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Council Chair Jacob, a second by Councilmember Shelton. Any discussion to the motion to approve? Seeing none, let's vote.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Perfect. Thank you so much for being here. And, uh, batter up. Let's go. Um, by the way, tomorrow's opening day, Major League Baseball, in case anybody wondered, not including the two games in Korea, which only one of which should have counted. Um, go to resolution twenty four dash zero one three. This is item six C. Public hearing, uh, for the resolution authorizing a fee waiver in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. For the Jordan Education Foundation for their challenge obstacle run. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. This is an application received by the Jordan Education Foundation. Uh, he's here to, can answer your questions. Um, they do a challenge obstacle run. They've done this multiple years within West Jordan. Um, their application showed, uh, about twelve hundred and fifty participants, which requires a mass gathering permit. The mass gathering permit requires police, fire, uh, facilities, those type of things. Uh, which is what, uh, the nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars is for. Um, is the, uh, addressing the public health and safety. They have made a deposit as the council has directed. Deposits are not open to fee waivers. If they take care of the city facilities, the deposit is returned. This is a waiver fees that would normally be collected. Uh, this is similar but different than the Copper Hills Baseball. In that there's no agreement, but the Jordan Education Foundation, which is included in the packet, has provided in excess of five hundred hours of service. Uh, providing labor to different city, uh, committees and events. Um, and finally, um, state law, as just, we always say it, state law does not allow the city to waive fees. Once it exceeds one percent of the budget, which is about six hundred and eighty four thousand. You're not even close to that. Uh, fee wa, all fee waivers fall within the role of the legislative branch. So that is what's before you. And, uh, like I said, the Jordan Education Foundation is here should you have any questions.
All right, any questions for staff or the applicant before we open the public hearing?
I, I think it might be nice to allow him to come up and, um, just express what it is like.
Make his case? Come on up. Uh, we'll, we'll call that a question and go ahead and give you the opportunity to, uh, chime in.
Do you have a specific thing you'd like me to address? I do have a couple of things I was gonna mention.
Why don't you start and then?
So in the, I have two, two main comments. In the spirit of, uh, you know, of a report, which we're ha, which we're.
Yeah, tell us your name, sorry.
I am Jason Castro. I'm a volunteer board member on the Jordan Education Foundation, uh, a West Jordan High School graduate, by the way. Brian, I know, it's laughter. We were classmates and so.
Go Jags.
Yeah, exactly. Go Jags, that's right. My dad was a high school teacher at West Jordan and at Copper Hills, so I have a, I have a big time. Um, and I'm the one who, uh, developed and, and puts on this, this event every year. And so the foundation, um, loves the community, loves our schools and loves our teachers. And, uh, our biggest, you know, commitment is to raise money for classroom grants. We do multiple things, but classroom grants is by far the number one thing that we do. And when I started on the board. Fifteen years ago, that first, second year, we were so excited that we were able to get a hundred thousand dollars in classroom grants. And now we've just multiplied that so exponentially. But I wanted to share with you, because in the packet, it talks about how. The, uh, West Jordan schools, because there's a higher percent of Title Nine schools or Title One schools? One, sorry, Title One schools, that there's a higher percentage. And it's a very just basic comment because that's a very small packet. You don't have a lot of room. So I was gonna give you three anecdotal examples. Since we started using an online, uh, system to do our, uh, classroom grants. We were, we did that with the idea that we could get matches from, you know, other big entities and we could basically double our money. And we've been able to do much more than that. In the last seven years throughout the district. We have been able to do six point three million dollars in classroom grants, which on average across the sixty nine schools. Is about over that period, about ninety four thousand dollars in classroom grants per school. I'm gonna give you three examples in West Jordan, what it's been for some of these schools. So Majestic Elementary, it's been one hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, nine hun, nine hundred and thirty six. For. Here, this one is for. Heartland or this one's for West Jordan Middle School, two hundred and twenty five thousand, zero, uh, zero ninety three, two hundred and twenty five thousand just over. And then for Heartland Elementary, which by the way, Heartland has been our star bragging this whole last year. Heartland is the only school in the whole district that received a classroom grant for every single teacher in the school. And their amount over that period, remember the average is ninety four, they were a hundred and eighty one thousand, eight hundred and forty three. So we love the schools and we're really grateful for that. And so that's just a little bit of, you know, good news. About some of the things that the foundation is doing in the district. And my second comment has to do with two years ago, I mean, we've always had great support from the city for this event. For the first five years, we were given a hundred percent just fee, fee waiver, but it was never unanimous amongst the, the council. And two years ago, I don't even know who originally suggested it, but someone said, hey, look, we're not gonna ever get uni, universal approval. The way it's designed, we need to do some waiver, some service in lieu of fees. And we wanted to be happy, so we cheerfully went along with it, but we kind of liked how it was done before. But I will say, that has been amazing because. One of the things that we do is we get volunteers from all the high schools to come help us put this event on. But because we had an obligation to provide some extra hours and some service for the city. It has kind of deepened that. You have the, the report in your, in your packet. Over the last two years, we have been able to provide over five hundred hours of service for specific. West Jordan City, um, projects or events. And it's been nice because we get these students and they love having an event. They love helping us. But then they don't necessarily have something. And now we kind of have this connection. We have connections with Ariel over at the city. And so these, you know, National Honor Society, Latinos in Action, all these different clubs. Now have another outlet where they, rather than doing hours of community service just within their school, they're doing it out in the community and they actually love it. So what we did just semi cheerfully to get along has actually become something we would never want to do it any different because it helps to create more involvement. And that's the whole point of this event. This isn't our number one money raising event, but it's by far our number one event that gives the foundation. Uh, community, uh, visibility, you know, and so. You know, and so anyway, thank you for the support you've done and be happy to answer any questions about this specific event.
Perfect. Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Sounds good. Um, all right, we're seeing no further questions. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Once again, you have three minutes if you want to speak to this issue. If you're online, raise your hand. If you're in the room, come on up to the microphone and we'll, let's have three minutes. Just give us your name. I'm not seeing anybody in the room. I think I saw one online. Raise the hand.
Yeah, Mr. McConaughey is online and has raised his hand to speak.
All right, Mr. McConaughey.
All right, thank you, council. Uh, Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. My two little tornadoes really wanted to speak to this one, but unfortunately, they did not make it and they are asleep. Uh, but as parents, we are very appreciative for the good that this does for the schools. Uh, Mr. Casto shared the numbers that, uh, were contributed to schools. All five of our little boys are either on an IEP or five oh four, and we very much appreciate the extra help that these, uh, these funds can provide. Mr. Casper can correct me on the numbers if I'm off, but just last year, Majestic, uh, where those two twins attend, uh, received thirteen thousand dollars for helping the classroom. So, I very much appreciate the support from the city and would very much encourage that continued support. Did question was in the packet, because although it does show the services from provided, it shows an application for fee waiver rather than service of lieu of fees. However, all the content does seem to support the service in lieu of fees, so scratching my head a little bit there. But on the whole, uh, very much supportive of this, grateful for, grateful to JEA for taking the approach to try and earn the funds this way and also for Centurion and West Jordan. Um, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further public comment? Not seeing anybody else? Uh, anybody else online?
No, no one else has raised their hand.
Online? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing on this item, bring it back to the council, Councilmember Green. So I just have to tell you, I think that, uh, it's been both the last two years. At least the last two years that I've gone, I've come over to the event here in Veterans, uh, Veterans Park. It's, it's, uh, an amazing event. Uh, you guys do a good job on that event. And, uh, Jordan School District, um, is really a good partner. I mean, I, I know that, uh, Chief Wallentine has talked immensely about the number of times that you guys have helped us with, uh, training rooms and, and where, where Jordan School Districts helped us with training rooms and other kinds of things as well, so. Yeah, I think this is a, I think this is a good thing and, uh, uh, I will be in support of this. Excellent. Councilmember Whitelock.
So, um, I agree, you should do service in lieu of fees, and that is how you get my vote. Councilmember McConaughey was also very much in favor of having service in lieu of fees. I do want to point out that Jordan Education Foundation and Jordan School District are different entities, as well as Jordan Education Association. And it is the foundation that is mostly volunteers. They are housed in the district. The district does give them space and they do have one employee or two, two employees, I think. Yeah, two employees. But the foundation is the one that is before us tonight, and the foundation does do, the grants are things that the teachers apply for, so it's something that the district isn't going to provide for the teacher. And so it may be, sometimes they'll ask for devices that can be translators, so the kids can wear these devices and the teacher speaks English and it translates into the child's language. Um, it can, they can, they can, they ask for some creative things and it goes before the foundation and they decide if it's a worthy thing or not, and, and then disperse the funds as much as they can on what they have. They also do amazing, um, Christmas thing as well, that's, that's pretty awesome. So, I appreciate the foundation. I hope that when you apply, that you do apply for service in lieu of fees, because as you pointed out, when we serve our communities, we're more apt to be involved in our communities. We take more pride in our communities, and that's what we're all about, right? Getting together as a community. So thank you for, for doing it this way.
Perfect. I'm going to go, uh, let's go Councilmember Shelton, then Councilmember Bloom also had a comment.
So I'd like to just tack on to what Councilmember Whitelock said, which is building community, and I feel like events like this build our community, build a sense of neighborliness and also help to build, uh, an identity here in West Jordan. Something we've talked about trying to do as a council is build our city's identity. And before anything else, we are good neighbors to each other and we need to build that sense of community and caring for each other. I'm just in full support of this and, and very excited for it, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloom?
Um, I do want to say thank you as well. Thank you for strengthening our community. Thank you for bringing our community together and thank you for providing opportunities for service. And if there isn't any more comments from the council, I would like to do the motion, if that's okay?
That's in order.
All right, can you get it up on the screen? Awesome. Thank you, Warren. Uh, I move to approve resolution number twenty-four dash zero, one, three, authorizing a fee waiver in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars for the nonprofit five oh one C three Jordan Education Foundation for the Challenge Obstacle Run.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Bloom, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's have the vote.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Perfect. Thank you, and thank you for being here. Um, I went to that event last year and all I really remember is it was very cold and rainy. Yeah, that's right. Good weather this year. Uh, we're moving on to business items seven A. We have resolution twenty-four dash zero, one, four. Is authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with a severance clause in excess of three months. And this will go to Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's correct. What you have before you in this resolution is, uh, an authorization from the council to, uh, have the mayor execute this employment agreement with Paul Jerome. He is the, uh, proposed assistant city administrator for the city of West Jordan after, uh, Jamie Davidson departs our city in June. Mr. Jerome is currently the city administrator of Eagle Mountain City and stepping down from being a city administrator to take this assistant city administrator role. This severance provision is the same as what is, what exists currently for the assistant city administrator. We're not proposing any change there. Uh, just to comment about severance agreements in general in our city, uh, we have about two percent, two and a half percent of our city employees that have severance agreements. They have to meet three conditions to warrant a severance agreement. They have to report directly to, uh, or be, uh, held accountable and serve at the will of elected officials, be at the department head level or higher, and, um, not have any job protection, statutory job protection in their job or property interest. Uh, so they are completely at will. In those instances, uh, we have had severance agreements. I think that's everything I want to say. Uh, if you have any questions for me or Mr. Jerome, he is here. Uh, he can answer any questions about his role, his background. But I'm anxious to, uh, turn this over to the council at this point.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for staff? Councilmember Shelton?
Uh, first of all, I'd just like to uh, thank Mr. Jerome for taking the risk of leaving a secure job, walking away and moving to a new city. You know, probably wondering if he's going to like working with Mr. Lee or not. It's a big risk, this step he's taking, and I acknowledge that and I'm grateful for that. And, well, I understand the concerns that have been voiced, uh, publicly. Uh, I am going to be in favor of this and, uh, that's, I just wanted to give those two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green? So, first off, Mr. Jerome, this has nothing to do with you. I want you to understand. I, I generally agree with Mr. Jones. I do not like severance agreements. I've worked for a government for since two thousand and five in one way, shape or form, as an at-will employee with no severance package available. I could be terminated at any time and only the last cup, and in fact, in my current position for the last five years, I have no legal protections. There are a lot of government employees who serve at will, who do not get severance packages. Fundamentally, I think they're improper. You do a good job. You do your job, you, you get paid, and if not, hey, you go someplace else. How, that being said, it is standard practice for every municipality in this state to do it. And it's the way that municipalities keep, um, can attract employees. Now, to it, just Steve, so you're not concerned. This agreement, or not, try to alleviate your concern. This agreement is only if is terminate, if the individual is terminated without cause. If they're terminated with cause, uh, they don't get the severance agreement. Isn't that right? Isn't that the way that works?
Sorry, that's correct.
So, uh, the, the only reason we're at the risk, uh, here is if the mayor decides to say see you bye without any, without any cause. Uh, and so while I have a fundamental problem with severance agreements for government employment, heck, in the private industry, you can do whatever the heck you want. I don't care. While I have a fundamental agreement, a disagreement with severance packages in government in general, I'll support this because it is a standard practice with two hundred and forty-nine cities and towns across the state of Utah. Thank you. Councilmember Bedore?
Uh, and I will be for this as well, but, uh, for Mr. Jones and others who may have that same feeling, I, I look at this in terms of someone who in, uh, jobs have, has been let go without good cause. And the last job I, uh, not the last job I had, but a, a job I had previously, I made sure that one was put in for me to protect me. We got a new CEO who wanted to get rid of me to put one of his people in, uh, but didn't want to do it because of the severance package protected me. And I think if people are going to take a risk and do something, um, that is necessary like this, I, I think we would all like this kind of protection if we could get it. But the problem, the reason some of these things are in place is so that we get the right people and so that we get the best people for the job. If we don't have things like this in place, um, then people might not be willing to take the risk on West Jordan. So I think that it's good to have this in place and I will be voting for it. And I wish I had one of these in every job I had.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Thank you. Isn't it great that we live in a country we, where we can agree to disagree? Because I'm going to adamantly disagree with most of my fellow council members. Just because something is done everywhere else doesn't mean you should do it. My mother told me, just because your friends are going to do something stupid, you're going to do it too? Which kind of meant if you do, you're going to big trouble. Um, so just because others do, I don't think that West Jordan needs to. Our residents have spoke out against these and what they call them is golden parachutes. And they're adamantly opposed, and my job is to be the voice for the residents. Um, and, and I spoke to Mr. Jerome. I have nothing against him. His resume is great. I'm sure he'll do a great job. But I'm not of the belief that I have to give them these severance packages, and it was mentioned twice by Mr. Jones, three months. But when I read the resolution, it mentioned six months, so, uh, just want to bring that up, but, um, and when you're talking of these top administrators, that's a lot of money. Um, more than many of our residents even make in a year will be the se, possible severance package. And part of the reason that we went to a strong mayor is so that he could choose who to have working for the city and get the best people in, but, okay, now they all have severance packages, so that's a big decision for a mayor to make, isn't it? If he comes in and says he doesn't think that these guys are doing the right job, then it's like, then they're going to get this payout, that's going to be in the news, and the mayor's going to have issues come back to them for something that maybe they didn't, you know? Mayor Burton did vote for severance packages, but someone in the future, maybe they would take fallout because of it. So mostly, I, I fundamentally, you know, if it, if it doesn't work for my street sweeper, you know, they still come and work for us. I think we can attract good employees without severance packages. I just see other big corporations do that. I think we could too. And I want to be a voice for the residents. That's the whole point of me serving, and so my vote will be no. But again, has nothing to do with Mr. Jerome. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Bloom.
I will be voting in favor of this. I feel severance packages attract the best and brightest people in any industry, and I'm in an industry that has that as a standardized package deal as well, and I appreciate them, and they provide a lot of safeguards as well as attracting people. And in our city, we want to attract the best and we want long-term and we want what's best for our city. And so in my opinion, I'm excited for this. I look forward to working straighter in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just go ahead and chime in too, just because there seems to be some, I don't know if it's a false equivalency. I don't know, I don't know what the right word is, but, um, I too was, uh, recently let go, recently, a couple of years back. I, I noticed the older I get, the more years recently starts to encompass. But, uh, I, I too was, was once let go from a position because the CEO changed. And the CEO, I wa, I was part of a package of employees that the previous CEO had hired and that he got rid of us one at a time. And it just, all it took was one little thing done in a way he didn't think it should be done. Not that it was wrong, but it just, it was difference of opinion and you were gone. And it wasn't just me, it was several people that just fell like dominoes. That said, working for a city is inherently different. Your boss, Paul's boss in this role, is up for a vote of the people every four years. That doesn't happen in the private sector. You don't very often get CEOs that turn over by a vote of shareholders every four years. Like it comes up by clockwork and you have to vote and you have to get approved and you have to, and, and there's five or six other people out there making their case to be that guy, right? To be, to be that, that overseer, so that's different. Uh, the street sweepers have merit protection. They don't, they can't just get fired because the mayor comes in and says, I don't like the way you've sleep the streets, you got to be kicked out. They have the protection of, um, well, there's the employee union, but then they also have the protection of having to go through warnings and steps of disciplinary process before they can get to the point where they can be let go. And then when they're let go, they can appeal it to a board, which includes council members and other people. That's not the case with the at-will employees with the, the, and we only allow the at-will employees, we only have them at the very top echelons because they report directly to somebody who's subject to being fired by the people at any time. Well, not anytime, but you know, regularly, right? Some, some states do it at any time, right? You can have a recall election, but Utah doesn't do that. So it's, it's different for me. And again, it don't, it doesn't apply if he finds a better job and decides to leave. It doesn't apply if we fire him because he messed up. It only applies if we fire him for no reason. There's no cause. There's nothing documented. There's nothing. It's just like, I don't like the way you look anymore. Get out. That's the only reason that, that a severance package applies. Now, there's been some times in the past where we've granted some portion of severance packages and other things, just because of the way negotiations have broken down and things like that. Doesn't always happen, but it can happen. That's, that's an exception to this, right? That's different.
Doesn't always happen, but it can happen. That's, that's an exception to this, right? That's different. That's a different negotiation. So this is just putting it into the contract that, hey, if we let you go for no good reason, because we had an election and the new mayor wants a city administrator that, you know, he went to high school with or whatever. That's the only time you get that. That's it. So that's why I'm in favor. So I'll go ahead and move to approve resolution 24-014.
I second the motion.
All right. So it's a motion by Councilmember Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Shelton. Any discussion to the motion to approve? And I'm seeing none. So we'll go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
No.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
And Chair Jacob.
Yes.
I show the motion passes seven to seven, or excuse me, six to one. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the consent items approving the meeting minutes for March 13th. Councilmember Lamb.
Move to prove meeting minutes for March 13th, 2024. Move to prove consent items. Sorry.
I'll second it since nobody else is jumping in. Motion by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Jacob. Any discussion to the motion to approve those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rule that passes. And that concludes the agenda for the city council meeting. I'm just as a, as a, just as a note, just refer to your agenda for an upcoming ordinance 2417 for a rezone on 1996 and 1986 West Gardner Lane. Two good years, by the way. So just refer to your agenda for the, the packet on that. That'll be coming up on a future, future meeting and it's on here just because we have to do a first noticing requirement. So there it is. All right. So seeing the end of the agenda, I'll go ahead and call us adjourned if there's no objection. No objection. Well, oh, Councilmember Lamb, you're going to.
Can I get a second?
Oh, you want a second? I wasn't going to move. I was just going to call us adjourned. All right. We'll call us adjourned. And we'll talk about having a committee of the whole meeting. Cause we have one of those on the agenda too. Or not on the agenda, but agendized.
Can I move for a five minute break before we go to the committee?
Yeah, we don't have to move. We'll just convene the committee of the whole meeting in about, say five.
Now are you staying here or moving?
No, we'll go in the conference room.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, did you have something you wanted to say? Your lights on.
No, we're going to need at least five minutes to reconfigure.
Yeah.